Welcome to the short course on local planning and we're talking about housing here tonight with the city of Soqomie. We have four speakers tonight will be talking about growth management act, the legal basis of planning, open public meetings act and the roles in planning. Our first speaker is oh, before we get to go ahead, I have just a few slides that I want to share with you. And I want to share our speakers, our sponsors. The Department of Commerce is sponsored the short course and local planning. We've done so since 1977. In partnership with these organizations, the Planning Association of Washington and the American Planning Association are professional organizations for planners and they're here to support us in the interest of planning. The other two, the Washington Cities Insurance Authority and the AWC's Risk Management Service. They support the short course because Landy's planning is such a source of risk for local governments. And proper education can help reduce risk for cities. A little bit about Department of Commerce, we're not just planning. We we support strengthening communities in almost every aspect of community development. These are our short course. If you go to our website, you will find a video guide that I shared with you, you can get credit for taking the short course, specifically the public Open Public Meetings Act portion, we have a long guidebook that you can read as well as the booklet and we have a series on videos, we're going to be updating these for the periodic update, but for the most part, they're they're still current and a quick way to get a lot of information in a short time. And here's some more places, if you don't know about the Municipal Research and Services Center in Washington, it's really a go to for any specific questions that you might have. So if you go there, they have a search engine and you can find answers to just about any topic that you're looking for. We have a few other sources of training that you might be interested, Planning Association of Washington has an annual conference in the spring. The Washington American Chapter of the American Planning Association has a conference coming up in October. It's the second week in Vancouver, Washington, where you can go and learn about. There's a lot on housing this year, specifically racially disparate incomes, which we're talking about. And finally, if you're really up for more, we have planners forums on specific topics around the state. Any top questions before we begin? Great. So our next speaker is Bob Sterbank. He's been the city attorney of the city of Soqomie since December of 2013 with 24 years of experience serving Washington cities. Before joining Soqomie, he was a senior attorney with a firm of Kenyon D. Sand, where he served a city attorney for Lake Forest Park and DuPont, the town of Hunts Point and Special Counsel for numerous Puget Sound area cities on land use shoreline planning and litigation members. He was also a city attorney for cities of Federal Way Olympia and Mercer Island. He's a regular speaker at Washington Municipal and Land Use Law Conferences and we're excited to welcome him here. So Bob, why don't you take it away with the legal basis of planning?
All right. Thank you very much. I will do that and I'm going to share my screen here hopefully. And let me know if this is successful. We'll do that and get underway here.
It's not full slides yet.
How about that?
I can see your speaker notes.
Yeah. And indicated, I get to start off telling you about the legal basis of planning in Washington state and you might wonder, well, why cover the legal basis? Why not let the lawyers worry about that and let the decision makers and the planners get on to the more interesting part of planning? Well, the reason is, is probably know from your own experience, planning and land use regulations have a significant impact and there are high stakes for everybody on all sides and you don't need to take my word for it. If you've been in any hearing anywhere, you've no doubt heard property owners, developers tell you about how much they have at stake, how interested they are and committed to your community while simultaneously folks who are maybe on the other side telling you about how the decision was going is going to end life as they know it in your community and going to have detrimental impacts for years to come on every for everyone. And there are often no easy answers when you're trying to consider things that are in play and consequences that are in play. And the underlying framework, the legal framework that I'm going to talk about is often critical in providing a path forward. Both because it tells you where you can and can't go and because you need to be mindful as a decision maker or planner working on it that litigation frequently results. And so it's best to have a good understanding of the lay of the land as you start and also be thinking about questions and not that not be shy about asking them of your legal counsel of the planners you work with, if you're a decision maker, there are no dumb questions and no easy answers in this arena. So that's why we're going to spend a little time at the beginning, what am I going to cover? First of all, the federal constitutional basis for planning and land use. A handful of pretty old, long in the tooth US Supreme Court decisions that really provided the framework to allow states and local jurisdictions to get going with zoning and planning about 100 years ago. I'm also going to talk about the Washington State Constitutional and Statutory Basis for Planning and Land Use Regulation, including the direct delegation of power to cities and towns in Article 11, Section 11 of the Constitution and then a variety of statutes that the legislature has adopted from time to time and amended over the years, many times that really provide the the foundation for the types of planning and land use regulatory decisions that you work on or make. We're also going to talk a little bit about the project permitting and judicial review scheme that's in place under what's known as regulatory reform. And then if time permits, and I think that's going to be a stretch here, given the range of topics. Some of the federal takings and due process related challenges that that come forth. There are a number of slides in that have been circulated. And thanks to Kristen French at the Mason County PUD. Many times when one works on a project like this, the short course, there have been many speakers that come before us, there will be those who come after Kristen kindly provided the slides most recently. I've attached her slides here on those federal constitutional and other issues that so you've got them for background, we likely won't have much time to talk about them, but they are in the in the presentation. So let's get underway, what's some of the basic terminology, of course, the Constitution, when I say Constitution or constitutions plural, I'm talking about the federal United States Constitution as well as Washington state and I'll call those out separately when when that's applicable statutes, that is, the laws that are adopted by Congress and or the Washington Legislature and you'll see references or hear them USC, that's the United States Code, those are the laws adopted by Congress or the RCW, the Revised Code of Washington. Federal examples, the Endangered Species Act, the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act, those are Congress enacted statutes and they'll typically have a title and then United States Code and then a section number, so you know, 42 USC 1983, for example. You don't want to see those numbers because that usually means someone's bringing a lawsuit against you under the Federal Civil Rights Act, but that's the way that that nomenclature and lexicon works, the state examples, the Growth Management Act or GMA, you're all familiar with that, the Shoreline Management Act. And again, then you'll you'll see a a chapter blank of RCW or RCW and it's typically a number two, a title dot chapter dot section. And then, of course, don't forget your city ordinances and resolutions adopted by your city or town council and that apply within and under that federal and state statutory framework. So there are, of course, regulations that come into play from time to time because the statutes can delegate authority to federal or state agencies to adopt the administrative regulations, those have their own alphabet soup. There the code of federal regulations or CFR or the Washington State Administrative Code or WAC. And of course, all of these, the constitutions, the statutes and the regulations, as well as municipal ordinances and resolutions are subject to judicial interpretation by federal and state courts. And those interpretations can and do change from time to time. So I'll say it here and frequently in this pre presentation, consult your lawyer before you take action as you go along when you're considering things. Not a plug for myself, there are a number of good land use and municipal attorneys in Washington and in this area, the more eyes on something, the better. So get underway, what's the federal constitutional basis for planning? The US Constitution doesn't itself authorize planning nor use the words police power. But the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments impose limits that have been used and applied by courts against local jurisdictions to live what can be done in the area of land use and zoning and particularly the Fifth Amendment, which typically applies just to the federal government, but then the Fourteenth Amendment, which applies parallel language to the states and local governments as no person can be deprived of life, liberty or property without due process of law nor be denied the equal protection of laws. And private property may not be taken for just use without just for public use without just compensation. So probably all familiar with those, maybe less so with how they have been applied and how they really got us started in planning and really the foundational case here is the Village of Euclid versus Amber Realty case from 1926. Sometimes it's mistakenly referred to as authorizing zoning, it itself does not. But it really upheld an early example of zoning in a way that that cleared cleared the field, so to speak, for cities and towns and counties to undertake what we traditionally think of as zoning. And in the small world or six degrees of separation, I actually grew up about 10 miles from what's now the city of Euclid, my dad grew up there, my grandparents lived there the entire time I was growing up. And so it kind of gives the odd feeling that it's not usual for I want to be able to read a Supreme Court case and and immediately know which blocks and streets they're talking about here because they were they were local roads that have traveled on from time to time. So what happened in Euclid? The then Village of Euclid adopted one of the first ever zoning regulations. And it adopted some of what we now think of really typical zoning requirements, it set classes of use. It set height limits for those types of uses. And then it limited the area where those use districts or uses could be engaged in. So for example, the U1 and U2 districts generally limited uses to single family and then two unit multifamily or town home type residential uses. And commercial, industrial and other non-residential uses were prohibited. And as the the districts went up through these six districts that the ordinance adopted, you one, two, three, four, five, six. Each higher number incorporated the uses below it and then they were applied almost in sort of wedding cake fashion to strips going northward across the city or the then village. And the realty company that owned the property at issue didn't apply for building permit, but instead challenged the entire ordinance or what we call it. A facial challenge rather than an as applied challenge. And they argued that it deprived them violated the Fourteenth Amendment by depriving them of property without due process of law because the ordinance significantly reduced the value of their property. Which they said had highest and best use for retail and commercial uses, given that it was along one of the main thoroughfares near Euclid Avenue. And that that was what the property was best suited for and without those uses, they lost a significant amount of their value, which they claimed violated the Fourteenth Amendment. What did the Supreme Court say? They said, you know, it's axiomatic by that point that zoning ordinance are authorized by the police power that's exercised to protect the public welfare. And you see a quotation on the slide here, even though the court said at the outset of opinion that zoning ordinances were a relatively modern construct that had just come into play really with the advent of very densely developed cities. By 1926, the court is saying no serious difference of opinion that it's valid to have laws that regulate height limits, character of materials, types of construction, areas that need to be left open and so on and so forth. But that the test for that is what's the relationship to the public welfare? And the court articulated that, and again, you see the quotation on the slide. If it's clearly arbitrary and unreasonable, not substantially related to public health, safety, morals, we'll leave that aside for the moment, but public health, safety and welfare is the typical articulation of the police power. And the court importantly said that the courts courts generally should defer to local legislatures and that if it's debatable, the legislative judgment ought to be allowed to control. And so for that reason, it's that kind of articulation that really signaled to cities and states around the country that this was an appropriate area in which they could regulate. And in fact, the court took some pains to walk through the holdings and facts of of five or seven or so prominent decisions from state Supreme Courts around the country that had come to similar holdings. And and actually, I'll back up here for a second, one of the 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 points that the the court made that I think is it's interesting to note now, if you think about what you hear and read about our current Supreme Court and what people describe as the originalist type of jurisprudence that was really made probably most famous or infamous, depending on your point of view by Justice Scalia that says you have to, one has to look at the original text and if it's not there, it's not part of the Constitution. The court doesn't get to it. And and here instead, Justice Sutherland said in in Euclid that it although the meaning of the constitutional guarantees never changed that it was important to note that the scope of its application must expand or contract to meet the new and different conditions, which in a changing world is impossible, but it should be otherwise. And that although there's a degree of elasticity that's imparted not to the meaning, but the application of constitutional principles, statutes and ordinances. Which would then allow them to see if in a particular case, if it didn't clearly conform, then the law would fail, but it's a really different approach to the law and to viewing application of the Constitution than than you will hear currently from the current Supreme Court, the federal Supreme Court. So a couple of other cases quickly post Euclid in the in the years that immediately followed, and one of those cases came from the Seattle area, but first Necto versus City of Cambridge, Massachusetts. Court said it's well established what Euclid held and everyone agrees that the general zoning ordinance in Cambridge is constitutional, except that of course, you can't have a restriction that doesn't bear substantial relation to public health, safety and welfare. And in that that particular case, the residential only district was held by a special master in the in the court below not to relate to public health, safety and welfare because the uses on the surrounding properties were already industrial. In particular, a Ford Motor Company automobile assembly plant, even in 1928, remember when the Model T came out, barely been 10 years and a soap factory. And that those uses were on two sides of the plaintiff's property. If the special master found the property would have no value as residential use, no one wanted to build a house next to the factories. And that the findings were such that there wasn't any relationship and based on those findings, the court said really the opposite of Euclid doesn't relate, therefore it's unconstitutional. And then similarly, another early example of how things fail constitutionally if they're arbitrary. This case I mentioned from Seattle, Seattle Title and Trust versus Robers. It was a very early City of Seattle zoning ordinance. Again, generally residential. By the time the ordinance was adopted, the plaintiff had operated a what the court referred to as a philanthropic home for the aged poor for over just about 10 years. And when the city amended the zoning ordinance to essentially grandfather in this use that was previously made non-conforming. They included a provision that said it's allowed only on written consent from the owners of two thirds of property within 400 feet of either side. So essentially the ordinance handed veto power to the neighbors. The Supreme Court said cannot do that, that it was an unconstrained delegation to neighbors that was arbitrary and in their words, quote, repugnant to the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. And that not only was there no showing that the use, the the home was indispensable, that excluding it would be indispensable to the plan that the the facts were actually the opposite because the ordinance essentially allowed it just subject to excuse me, consent to the neighbors. And that's an early example of something that still holds true in Washington where more recent courts say that and I'm going from memory, but the articulation is essentially that community displeasure by itself cannot constitute a basis for permanent to permit denial. And so that's a very early example there of of how the determinations need to be made by the by the legislate local legislative body and an application on the standards to the facts and that allowing folks on either side who may like or dislike the project to make the decision is is arbitrary and not legal. So that's the basic federal context. Turning quickly to Washington. Our Constitution actually provides some basic operating authority for cities and then specific grant of police powers. So Article 11, Section 10 is where the the Constitution said the legislature may by the general laws provide for incorporation classification of cities and towns. And that those cities and towns, whether they were previously existing or hereafter organized, would be subject to and controlled by general laws. I'll use the air quotes, general laws by that the Constitution and then subsequent statutes mean general laws mean those laws that are adopted by the Washington State Legislature and that are codified in the Revised Code of Washington. For Article 11, Section 11, then specifically grants police powers to cities and towns. Says any city town or township can make and enforce all police powers, sanitary and other regulations not in conflict with the general laws. So and that same then authority is carried forward in a subsequent statute under the optional municipal code, which is was adopted in the late 60s, it's now the statutory scheme under which most Washington cities operate. And a section of that title says that the general grant of municipal power to a city, code cities is intended to confer the greatest power of local self-government consistent with the Constitution and that it should be construed liberally in favor of such cities. So if you're hearing this now, you may be thinking, okay, Sterbank. As long as we say it's consistent with the police power and substantially relates, we don't violate the federal law and we have all this constitutional authority, what's the problem? The problem being that there is a long established now push me, pull you, if you hearken back to the Dolittle character with the legislature between saying these topics are within the control of cities and towns and they have the authority versus the legislature specifying in general laws that no, you may not generally exercise your power, you may only exercise your power for subdivisions in this way, and you may only exercise your power for growth management planning in this way. And I'll talk about what some of those things are. First, the scheme schema, how did this come about? And these are these, the various statutes that we're going to talk about the Planning Enabling Act. The statutes that give authority to the agency's hearing examiner, Planning Commission. And then these handful of statutes that really form the core of local planning and zoning, the subdivision act, CIPA, the State Environmental Policy Act, Shorelines Act, Growth Management Act. And then the project review permitting and LUPA, the Scheme for Judicial Review of Now Planning Decisions. So the planning got its start not long after Euclid and after Robers in 1935, 1959. And then later it codified in 3670. And those generally establish the framework for planning commissions. And certain required elements for comprehensive plans and identifying the roles of some of the players, hearing examiners, planners, staff. But not generally imposing a uniform set of requirements over different types of governments. And then I mentioned the optional municipal code a few moments ago in 35A63, which is the part of the optional municipal code. Those pre-existing Planning Enabling Act types of provisions were added in with a little bit more flexibility for code cities to create a planning agency, what we would now call a planning commission. Specified what types of powers the commission would have to make recommendations, hold hearings related to zoning ordinances. And then also a hearing examiner system for certain types of decisions, variances, conditional use permits and the like later expanded to subdivisions. So that's the framework, what are the, what are the substance of the laws like? I mentioned one moment ago, you're probably all familiar with the State Subdivision Act, Chapter 5817. So it's adopted in the late 60s and actually a very prescriptive process for review and approval of land divisions created sort of the two categories of subdivisions or what in the shorthand plaits, a long plat and a short plat. Long plat or long subdivision, five lots or more, short plat is for fewer. And then there's a set of provisions for binding site plans, which are essentially commercial subdivisions. Carved out of that are lot line or boundary line adjustments, so those don't constitute a subdivision and aren't mandated that way, but in fact, most jurisdictions then in light of the reference need to provide and do provide an abbreviated administrative provision for approving those types of adjustments that don't change the number of the lots at issue, but that may move lots, turn them, change the shape of the lot, so long as the lots meet certain minimum size and other minimum requirements. Under the subdivision act, local governments are required to have a set of procedures to implement the statute, but it's got to be consistent with the overall statute, which generally leaves relatively little flexibility, jurisdiction can specify the size of lots, overall area where where those can be put into play, who makes the decision, whether it's going to be the city council involved in all instances, or whether there'll be a a preliminary decision made by a staff person and then the final made by the council or perhaps by a hearing examiner. But generally speaking, most of the requirements are specified in statute and not very much discretion is left to the local government to to implement it. Trying to keep an eye on the clock here. Another very prescriptive statute is the Shoreline Management Act. This was adopted in 1971 by Citizen Initiative, was predicated on federal statute. Really kind of following what we refer to as a command and control type of environmental regulate regulatory environment. If the stated purpose is to protect shorelines in the context of development, it was driven by a couple of egregious examples, one in Shalane, the other in the city of Seattle and Shalane, where lots were created by actually filling out into Lake Shalane. And the litigation from that, this was in the late 50s, is still ongoing, I believe that the city of Shalane is processing permits now for actual development of those, some almost 60 years later, there's another fairly egregious example from around the same time period, if you're driving across the 520 Bridge towards Seattle and just as you're coming over over the hump and getting near Mott Lake, you'll see an apartment building or two to the south that actually protrude into the water and they're built, built partly out on a fill over the lake. Those helped drive some of the citizen anger that led to the passage of of the act. It's a very prescriptive statute, it mandates all jurisdictions to adopt a shoreline master program, which is essentially a comprehensive plan type document for shoreline areas. The statute tells you what environment designations must be provided, it mandates that you make an inventory of shoreline conditions. It mandates the adoption of shoreline specific development regulations and all of this is subject to the Department of Ecology Review and Approval and with respect to the SNP, the master program. And it's subject to an appeal to the growth management hearings for it. And the the SMA goes one step further and says if a jurisdiction digs in its heels and does not timely adopt an SNP, the Department of Ecology can adopt it for you and impose it against the will or desire of the elected body or or citizens in that area. More recently, there have been regulations added to require and updating to require no net loss of shoreline. So if you have existing degraded conditions, such as some of the examples I just mentioned that Uh, that that'll essentially be frozen and stopped and that, that there won't be uh, future. Loss of shorelines uh, allowed. Uh, it requires a detailed permitting process uh, that is separate. From but can be concurrent or non-concurrent with an underlying land use permit. Uh, and the, uh, the permit decisions are appealable to a state board, the shorelines hearings board. And some types of uh. Substantial development permit approvals, specifically shoreline conditional use permits, shoreline variances. Uh, I go to ecology for a decision rather than to the local government. So, and I also listed a couple of things here that, that. Put property owners and members of the public on opposite sides of the fence almost automatically from the get-go. Water dependent uses. Said marine, marinas are given priority, docks are as well, and so waterfront owners. Uh, can be uh, vigilant opponents of shoreline master program regulations that attempt to restrict docks. Shoreline public access is also required in some form, visual. Where physical access is part of a master program that can put members of the public at odds with private property owners. Uh, who may prefer to limit public access particularly to shoreline areas. Uh, so it's been a, a longstanding uh. Set of regulation, uh, statutory scheme. It's difficult to implement smoothly. There's uh. Al- almost always involves a fair amount of conflict. Changing gears and to, not to steal Anne's thunder, but maybe to try to set things up here, the, the G M A. Uh, was adopted not until nineteen ninety. Uh, it has uh, been amended almost every year since its adoption. It was adopted following defeat of a citizen initiative that was patterned in many ways after the, the SMA. And that sought to utilize a similar top-down mandatory uh, approach. Uh, and the initiative was defeated in part by uh, appeals to. Uh, the fact that there was a bill in waiting. Uh, that was said to preserve more local discretion. For e- elected city, the town councils, county councils to make decisions about land uses. And so the G M A out of the gate established a structure for mandatory comprehensive plans. Capital facility planning for expected growth, urban growth, area identification. Preservation of uh, uh, critical areas. Uh, but allowed the local jurisdictions the discretion to um. And. Adopt those documents and identify those areas uh, at issue. Uh, while the planning was had to, had to be based on a twenty-year growth horizon that's provided by the, by O F M. Um, the decision about what growth to allow and where to allow it. Was supposed to be left to the planning jurisdictions. Um. Urban growth areas under the act are to be drawn, and I'm using air quotes again cooperatively between cities and counties. Based on growth projections and needs. Uh, uh, those of you who uh, work here, I know we have some folks out of state on the. On this conference, but those who are working in the Upper Snow Valley Va- Valley, um. Probably know why I'm using air quotes around the cooperation between cities and counties. Uh, since I think being on the city end, it feels like. Uh, the urban growth area decisions are, are dictated solely by the county and that there's. There's not a lot of cooperation to be observed. Perhaps that'll change. Uh, what else about the G M A quickly? Um. As I said, it was intended originally to preserve local autonomy and flexibility, and, and there was even a twenty-ten amendment that. Added a fair amount of language that attempted to restate that purpose. Uh, in, and emphasizing that the legislature intended. For the growth board to defer to counties and cities and how they plan for growth. And that. That the obligation to comply with the state framework and harmonize the planning goals of the chapter with. Local conditions and implement the city's future that, that that burden rested with the community and not with the growth board. Nice sounding language. I think in practice, we've seen that. Uh, the deference to local communities often honored more in the breach and that over the years. Really with some regularity, the legislature is chipping away. At local prerogative by adding additional mandatory requirements to the G M A. I've listed them here. You're probably familiar with many of them. Starting with essential public facilities. Uh, and, and I'll note, uh, I was involved in some of the original litigation over the third runway at C TAC. And if you saw the Seattle Times over the weekend, uh, you know, probably noticed that planning for. Uh, third runway uh, capacity be exceeded is underway. And that they've identified. Potential areas for airport expansion and the uh, anti. Uh, airport groups are already forming, so this. Push me, pull you is going to begin again over airports. But uh, additional things have been added to the G M A accessory dwelling units. Development incompatible with military installation. There are new requirements, and I know Ann will focus on these a- around housing supply and affordability. School citing uh. Just this last year, organic materials management facilities, if you're not familiar with what that is. We're talking about compost. Uh, and so not to say that any of these are bad things, uh, or that they shouldn't be planned for. Uh, but we are, as I said, in a, working in a world where originally the, the discretion was supposed to be in the hands of the local uh, governments and now. Let, the legislature is adding mandatory things that must be uh, accommodated. And all of these things. Uh, comp plans and development regulations that a, a city uh, or county uh, enacts. Are appealable to the growth management hearings board. Mister Tobar can uh, speak to some of those things and there's a. Uh, there's a wealth of precedent and decisions from the board as. Uh, as they uh, tried to grapple with this brand new statute and. Uh, jurisdictions from all over the state coming uh, from uh, divergent viewpoints on it, on how to comply. I'm gonna look to Ann, uh, I know that uh, I am probably about running into your time. I'm not sure. Uh, how far, how much farther you, you want to take it from here? You could go right into the G M A uh. Or I.
Yeah, we're at six forty-five, which is the time I. Allocated for you. I, I think you set it up really nicely.
All right.
I see what's beyond the curtain, but those are in the slides.
That, yes. More on the slides on these, the other statutes I mentioned, uh, as well as uh, some description of the. Uh, project permit and judicial review requirements. And then of course, the, the litigation related uh, causes of action at the end, so. Uh, my contact information is here. Uh, happy to take questions afterwards. Tonight or uh, through email or phone, however people would like.
Does anybody have any questions for Bob? Thank you for that trip through zoning and planning through zoning. Has it? That was a wonderful trip. Anybody have questions? Before we move along. No? Okay, well, um, we will have. Time for questions at the end as well. Let me um. Bring my slide to you. I've a little bit more introduction about me. I've been with growth management for twenty years. Um, so I've seen a lot of, a lot of tweaks and changes over the years, worked on some of those issues that. Uh, Bob talked about. And I've been working on housing since. About twenty sixteen. And it's got ever more interesting. Until we've hired a team of seven people to. Help communities implement all of the new housing requirements and grant opportunities that have been provided by the legislature. So without further ado, let me get started. And share my presentation. I can't see the chat, so I will review that after. But feel free to add your questions in as we go along and we'll, we'll address them later. So we're going to be discussing comprehensive planning under the Growth Management Act. We're going to talk a little bit about why we do this, although Bob covered that territory. The framework in Washington and then um, specific focus on planning for housing because we've been doing this for. Um, many years already since twenty nineteen is when the, the funding first started flowing for housing specific. Planning be, in response to the housing crisis and the homelessness crisis in this state. So first of all, why, why do we plan? Well, because we have this growth management framework, but. Even in uh, communities that are not required to plan under the Growth Management Act. They still use this framework because they find value in the framework that, that G M A provides. Why do we do it? Well, I'm trying to protect the good things out about our community. What's great here? What do you want to preserve? Um, what's our, what's our shared community future look like? What direction do we want to be going so that? We build the kind of community we want. What, what do we need right now? To provide the pu- public health and welfare and, and. The things our community needs. Ho- how do we get there? What, how, what are priorities for spending money and along the way we build community? So again, thank you to all of you for being here tonight. Uh, building your community and looking forward to the future of your community. We also plan so that it, we know as. A public, what's going to happen in our community and you know as a property owner, what you can do with your property. And we continue to grow. The state is kind of old, but there's this general trend that Washington continues to grow because of our economy. Our temperate climate, which is ever more important than natural beauty here. We're not making a lot of new Washingtonians, but people continue to migrate here from other places. It's a little bit slower during the pandemic. But we're still growing. Almost every county in the state. So a little bit about housing to start with. Why, why is housing expensive here in Washington state? Well, people keep coming here. And we're forming households and bringing people faster than housing is being built. So you can see on the right, there's little percent change in housing. In the eighties and the nineties, we were building housing faster than population. And it's two thousands, we kind of stopped and. And for the last ten years, we've been growing faster than we've been building. And so that creates shortage and supply. More competition, housing gets more expensive. And it's more expensive all around the state. What are we building? Well, here's our housing production over the last twenty years. And you can see the blue is single family. That's the predominant housing type with most of our communities, about seventy percent. Two or more units, so multifamily as we get into the last. Five years, you can see a lot more multi-unit housing is being built because. That's where the market is. That's what people can afford. And then this mobile home and special housing units, you could see that we. Built a lot of smaller units, single family, uh, um, single room occupancies, accessory dwelling units, mobile homes. Like the really affordable low-end stuff. And we really stopped doing it about twenty-ten and we've brought it back a little bit in the last couple of years, but. Um, you can see the pandemic, but we are um. Our housing production in, in general is still not attained what it was before the Great Recession. And I think twenty-ten is an anomaly. It's the census catching up. So another piece that we want to talk about for housing is cost burden. Cost burden is when you're paying for more than thirty percent of your income for. Rent or mortgage and utilities. And we, it's a rule of thumb, it used to be twenty-five percent the, from the feds, but it's thirty percent, but if you're. That your rent should be about thirty percent of your income. And your co- cost burden, if it's more, you're severely cost burdened. If it's more than fifty percent of your income on housing. Um, and it's different for renters and for homeowners. If you're a homeowner, then you're, you're really using this as a, as a tool to build wealth. You're putting all the money you're putting into rent, you're really saving it for the future. If you're a renter. You really don't get anything for the rent that you're putting and often renters are paying more for housing than homeowners because. Homeowners have a. They know what their housing costs are going to be and they're in control. Renters, they've seen their renting keys by hundreds of dollars a month and they really have no. Um, no power to control that, other to move, but we know housing, there's a shortage. And if you're at the lower end, end of the income spectrum, you can see this, the income groups. If you're in the thirty, zero to thirty or fifty and you're spending half of your income on rent. There's not very much left and you're really having to make choices between. Groceries or childcare or dental, most low-income people that can't afford dental. Um, and so you really, you're really looking at. At hard times, whereas if you earn more age one hundred and you're spending thirty percent of your income on rent, it could be a lot, but you still have. A lot left over for other things. And it matters around the state based on where you are. Um, in Washington. The fair market rent is about thirty dollars per hour is the state housing wage. That's what you need to be earned to. To be able to afford housing. And obviously not everybody can earn that. And it's renters in cities that are most, have the most difficulty. Cause the whole state bedroom, the whole state. That rental wage is thirty dollars an hour, but if you're outside of a metro area, it's more like eighteen, which is. You know, you, you can earn if you have a decent job. The um. I also want to say that if you're looking at planning for. People that the lower income bracket, the market is not going to provide it. And not at all for the zero to thirty. For the zero to fifty, maybe in fifty to eighty percent, there might be some strategies or incentive, the market will provide the housing. Like the multifamily tax exemption program. But mostly it's going to need some help. Above eighty percent, the market's going to provide housing for all of those people. So when you're thinking about what housing is needed at the lower income levels. So just to, a quick review, why is housing expensive? More people are coming here. There's less space. There's higher rents, there's fewer builders in the business still. Um, now we have labor and supply chain constraints. The concrete strike was a huge deal for affordability. Um, houses tend to be bigger. But cities do not build the housing. They set the condition in place to guide developer choice. And housing is a regional issue, so drive till you qualify. That means. People are driving so they can get to cheaper housing and that's not. Then you're adding transportation costs to your housing cost. Um, so I just want to uh, leave that with you before we move on to the G M A framework for, for planning. So the G M A as um. Our attorney stated was adopted in nineteen ninety to address. Threats to quality of life and manage the sprawl that was happening at that time when our population was close to halfway it is now. And it was really to require local planning set in a framework guided by the state law and regionally enforced. So who has to plan? Well, there's eighteen counties that were required to plan at the time based on their growth rates at the time and their population. And then there were ten more that saw the value of planning. And the funding that was available at the time for planning and they. Put their hand up and opted in to plan. And there's eleven counties that are only required to plan for critical areas and natural resource lands. There are fourteen G M A planning goals. There've only been two changes in the last thirty years that I know of. One is to add in the managed shoreline development, so we tried to coordinate the Growth Management Act. And the Shoreline Management Act. And then in twenty twenty-one. The language was encourage affordable housing, which was super soft and um. Really didn't put a lot of mandate on local governments to, to now plan for and accommodate housing. So those are the goals. All local plans have to be consistent. With these goals. The goals can be balanced. Um, you can focus on certain ones, but you do need to be consistent with all of them. So the first thing that counties had to do when the G M A passed was they had to designate and conserve. Natural resource lands of long-term commercial significance. This was to protect the industries of agriculture. Of forestry and for mining. Um, next jurisdictions had to designate and protect environmentally critical areas. Using the best available science, which may come from the state or from local studies. Um, to inform protections of the functions and values of these five critical areas. The first two, frequently flooded areas and geological hazardous areas. You really don't want to permit development in there as storms events get. Uh, more bigger. Thanks to climate change, um. Had invest. Permitting investments in these areas is not going to be um, a good idea. Mother nature is, is very powerful. We saw that in the big storms that wiped out the freeways. In Watkins County. The next one, critical aqua, yeah, quifer recharge areas, that's protecting the aquifers that we use for drinking water. And there's two ways to protect them. One is not pave over the previous areas that refill our. Aquifers and the others to protect them from hazardous uses. So that we're not polluting the water in those very permeable areas. And wellheads are also um, to partic- be protected as well because it's a puncture right through the earth. And so we want to be careful how we use hazardous uses around them. The last two, the fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas and wetlands. They are, they have often irreplaceable values. To us to protect our habitat and to manage water in the wetlands. And development needs to stay away from them. Okay, so that's taking care of the land. The land speaks first is a quote from a hearings board case. The next counties had to develop countywide planning policies with the cities. And that's the. And that's the regional framework is to plan for future growth, how you designate urban growth areas, how you plan for countywide facilities. And consider affordable housing needs. This did not get changed when we addressed the, the changes for housing. It's still um, consider these affordable housing needs and look at in a regional context. If you are in the Puget Sound region, which Snoqualmie is, you should look at the multi-county planning policies. So they're like an inner layer. So the growth management goals, vision 2050 is the multi-county planning policies that must be consistent with the GMA. And then the countywide planning policies, so King County in this case must be consistent with vision 2050. And then your own plan has to be consistent all the way up. But you do get to make your own decisions. We just needs to be consistent with this framework. So how do we designate urban growth areas? As Bob talked about, they have been in place for a long time in King County. And this is really it for the state. There's most of the state is not urban, most of the state is rural or federal lands. So here's an example of how we might allocate population. The county gets us, gets a 20-year population projection from our office of financial management. And that's coming out soon. It's every five years and so 22 is one of the years. Um, and you'll get a population projection for the whole county. And this county and the cities are to work together to identify how it will be absorbed. Hopefully we put a lot into urban areas, a little bit into rural areas. And when we don't have enough space in the urban areas to accommodate many housing units, we can add an urban growth area in the pink, like an area that's not incorporated yet, but is intended to be urban because we needed that expansion area. And if you add up all those urban growth areas, that's limited by the amount of population that's going to be projected in the future. Outside of those urban areas, we have rural lands. And that is to be developed at a variety of rural densities. So five units, one unit per five acres, one per 10, one per 20. And we're to protect the rural character. Outside of that, then we have uh, the resource lands. In this case, it's agriculture. That's as it's been for the first 30 years. There's a new piece that's happening is that commerce is going to take that population projection, look at under production, look at special needs for certain types of low income housing and come up with a countywide population or housing need projection for the county with recommendations breaking it down to cities because we've been asked to do that. And then you'll get a number of how many units at each income level you'll need to plan for, only to make assumptions about the types of zoning and incentives that might be needed. As you review and update your comprehensive plan, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later. If you are in one of these seven counties, which Snoqualmie is, you also have to do a billable lands review. So that means what have we permitted in the last? I think it's, well, it was eight years. Now we're going to be 10 year comp plans. And was it consistent with what the densities we thought we were going to happen? And if not, what reasonable measures are we going to do to make sure that the housing that's developed is closer to our assumptions? And now match future zoning with the housing needs that we got from this regional process. So let's talk about the comprehensive plan. There's five required elements. If you're a city, you need a land use element. So what are your land uses? Um, it also is to look at stormwater planning, groundwater protection and physical activity. Is your community designed in a way that supports a physically active lifestyle? That was added in 2005. There's the housing, transportation, capital facilities and utilities element, basically an inventory of what we have now, what we need now, what are the gaps and what we're going to need in 20 years as the population grows. And basically how are we going to figure out how to do it and fund it? As you can see, there's a new thing that's been added, which has your housing element, looking at racially disparate impacts that have happened. And how to begin to undo that and address displacement. At the countywide level, you have to do all of these and you could also need to do a rural element to how you define and protect your rural character. And of course you can add as many as you want. You can do historic preservation and climate change and any other elements that you like, but it really is an investment. Has to have policies that guide your community activities. And it's a vision, creates a vision for your future. There's more detail on this in our 3678 oh seven oh of the code of Washington. And then explanations in our administrative code, three, six, five, one, nine, six, which has not been updated for housing because so much has changed. So that's your comp plan and it's implemented by the regulations. So zoning by your critical areas, regulations, how you do subdivisions, what your public work standards say about how streets should be laid out and other regulations such as your design standards, regulating signs, landscaping, parking. All of those things that address health and safety within your community. So let's get on to focus on planning and housing. So here's that change to the GMA goal. And commerce has to provide these projected housing needs to local government. For not only the income bands, but also permanent supportive emergency housing and shelters. And there's also a piece in this House Bill 1220 that says clearly communities cannot prohibit these. These types of housing within certain areas in the city. So permanent supportive housing, it's apartment building, it's well-staffed, it you probably wouldn't know it's different from a regular apartment building. Emergency housing is often transitioned. You might not know emergency shelters, you're definitely going to know. And there's some um, regulations that you can set around their development. That was uh, required by September. A lot of communities are going to do it with the update. So the housing element also added some specific pieces. Um, sufficient capacity, what I always had to do within the UGA, consider these moderate density housing options, often called middle housing. So will it fit in our community? Where is appropriate? What should it look like? And this is the way to get affordable, more affordable housing that's smaller, that might be attainable by more people. You're to document barriers to housing availability, like what are the gaps in local funding? What are our regulations look like that might be hindering? And then Snoqualmie, there's, there's a lot of funding that has gone. We provided tools to how to do that, what like? How much parking do you require? That can really reduce the ability to, to give a number of units on a lot. How much, what, how big are the setbacks? What are the fees cost for certain types of housing? Well, really you get a chance to look at all of those things. New is consider housing locations in relation to employment. You want people who work in your community to be able to afford to live there and also to have people be able to commute less so that they're able to live closer to their work. And that brings in the role of transit oriented development. That's another piece that's implicit in the GMA, but not really explicitly stated. And finally, consider the role of accessory dwelling units. Bob mentioned that earlier, but accessory dwelling units had to be allowed for counties strangely. Because we want to protect rural densities and for cities over 20,000, they had to allow accessory dwelling units. And now all communities have to consider the role of ADUs. And really they should allow them. They have very little impact on the community and in fact, it's like one in a hundred homes may have an ADU in Washington state. So let's not make it harder to create housing in our communities. So we talked about these um, strategies that are needed for different types of housing. So as you're doing your comp plan and getting that number, oh, I need, most of the units are going to be at the zero to 30. How do we support those? You don't have to build them. But you do have to make it, think about how to make it easy or how to encourage developers to provide housing instead of beyond 125 towards the middle. What are the incentives and strategies that you can put in place? So here's some strategies. Uh, revise your, your zoning standards. If your land use map and your zoning map are the exactly the same, then when you need a small change to zoning to upzone, you got to change the land use map, which means you have to go through a whole complment process. So can we have a smaller number of land use designations? And make changes in zoning? Can you increase density in certain areas, maybe around transit corridors or neighborhood hubs? Can you really regulate designs so the new development you get is more fits in better? A lot of communities have a lot of strip commercial, the face of retail has changed. If there are ways to add mixed use in there or redevelop for housing. If you're trying to encourage lowered fees, uh, lower cost, lower rent development. Do we have sufficient infrastructure? Can we provide density bonuses if affordable housing is provided? Can you redo, can you speed up your permitting for those types of developments that you want? What about financial assistance? There are many things that communities can do. You can reduce fees for system development charges or permit fees or restructure them to favor that's multi smaller unit infill housing, uh, if there's surplus land. That's a really big leg up for developers of affordable housing. Or are there's other ways that you can support housing at the lower level? Or can you provide a protection for residents? So here's some examples of ways you can change zoning. Increase the housing types. Revised your ADU standards to reduce the parking or um, ownership, owner occupancy is a big one. How about off-street parking? Again, we talked about that. Can we reduce the setbacks? Um, can we allow clustered subdivisions so that you can be more creative with a given piece of land? What about manufactured homes? Consumer choice in housing does require that every community has to allow manufactured home, but very often manufactured home parks as they exist is some of the most affordable, non-subsidized housing that exists. And tiny, we love cottage communities, tiny house communities. How is that something that we can encourage in our community? Here's some process improvements that you can have. You can raise the SEPA, SEPA threshold of that exemptions. So uh, short plats are four up to four and below, and now it's up to nine that you can change that. There's an infill exemption where any development within a certain area with certain environmental review does not have to go through SEPA and that environmental review can hold a lot of risk for developers. So doing that upfront can really reduce risk and encourage certain types of development. Can you reduce the conditional uses? Like there's things that might have to go through certain committees, which adds time and risk. Are there ways to do it administratively? Here's some funding and other strategies that you can make use of in your community. And here's some affordable housing incentives, multifamily tax exemption program. Density bonuses, religious uses can ask for additional density bonuses that have passed a few years ago. Can you have alternative development standards for affordable housing to encourage? This is, this is a picture of an affordable housing development in the city of Olympia. Now we talked about few waivers or inclusionary zoning. Basically, if you're going to develop in our city of a certain size, certain number of your units, often like 10% have to be affordable. And some, uh, many communities like Redmond and Tacoma uh, use, use that. So here's um, there's a lot of strategies and you'll find that in our housing action plan guidance. Um, just to have a look at, at some of the things that, that communities are working with. So when you're selecting your strategies, buddy, how do you do that? What do your policies say? Are they good the way they are? Do you need to update them? What type of community do you have? What are the current marketing, market conditions and how will the policies that you select change? This is the specific language um, on the, I'm running out of time on disparate impacts and exclusion in housing. And so these are the things that communities have to do. Uh, we're having a workshop on this on Thursday and our guidance just came out today. If you want a primer, read the color of law by Richard Rothstein. It's really stunning about, it's a forgotten hymn, history of discrimination in America. So basically look at the racial exclusion happen in your community. Connect with the people who've maybe experienced it. Uh, recognize those places that have changed and adopt policies to prevent future displacement. So just to finish up, that's the end of our housing piece. Just to finish up the GMA. You, your plan, all elements have to be consistent internally and with adjacent jurisdictions and that hierarchy. Your plan is adopted by city council after hopefully a lot of public involvement. The plans can be amended only once per year. It has to be updated every 10 years. It was just changed to 10 to align the census. And then COVID happens, this is a bit late and it can be appealed within 60 days with, by anybody who has standing or anybody who participated in the process. These are tools, how you implement your plan. I'm going to skip the capital facilities piece. This is the comp plan um, update. Calendar, basically December 31st, 2024, you need to review plan and your development regulations to be in compliance if you're not appealed and then eligible for these grants and loans. So my final thought is that this pattern, this is the group of slumless, smokeless cities by M. E. S. R. Howard. This is his plan of a hundred years ago. There are villages that are water, walkable, connected by transportation. This is the timeless human centered design we've been doing for centuries. And it's still one of the most successful forms of trends of how we plan our cities. So think about as a basis and how you might allow development in your community to allow homes for all of those to live there. So we'll do a few questions and then we'll have a 10 minute break. So do we have any questions? Okay, I'll stop the recording. Welcome back to the short course on local planning. Our next speaker is Joe Tovar. He has served a total of 18 years as planning director for cities of Kirkland, Covington and Shoreline. 12 years as a member of the growth management hearings board and seven years, probably more as consulting and advising to state agencies, counties, cities and private clients. He worked significantly on the roadmap to Washington's future, a big look at the future of the growth management act. He's uh, been a professor at the UW College of Built Environment and he's a fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners, a big honor for a long career in planning. And he's currently joined the Department of Commerce to work on the new housing initiatives, including the middle housing initiative. Take it away, Joe.
Thank you, Anne. Is my PowerPoint up on the screen now?
I do not see you sharing it, but I can provide your slides if you like.
Yeah, if you could pull it up. Actually, no, probably it's going to work better if I pull it up at this end. Share. Am I sharing now? Not yet. Okay. Maybe you should pull it up.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, again, I'm Joe Tovar and just introduce me. One of the things I'm doing tonight is to talk about what I would call best practices for planning commissions, city councils, planning staffs of cities. Since this is basically a city audience, my references here are going to be to cities. Some of the same principles apply to county roles, but the nomenclature is different. The practices I've learned over the past 40 years in, uh, in planning in this state largely been gained by working for cities as Anne mentioned, I worked for four cities. One time I sat down and figured out how many evening meetings of planning commissions, community councils, city councils and other advisory boards I've attended. And it came up to be a pretty staggering number, well over 800 meetings. Which means I've seen a lot of good behavior. I've seen a lot of great practices and I've seen some that I would say are less so. So based on that experience, I'm trying to share with you what I think are best practices for roles and planning and how to be effective as a commission and as a council and as a staff. Next slide. You have the next slide up, Anne? You have the next slide up, Anne? Okay. Going to have to try and. Increase the size of this image. Here we go. Well, listed here in bullets are all of the different individuals that are involved in the planning process. The ones that I've highlighted in color here are the ones that I'm going to talk most about tonight. It's the members of the city council, members of the planning commission. Professional staff. And hearing examiners. So these are the four members, what I would call. The city team engaged in planning for the community. You're serving the community, members of the community give you input, applicants for permits are involved in some of these processes that require hearings. You have different organizations who may get engaged, submit letters, give testimony, environmental groups, business groups, other local governments. There are a lot of people that have an interest and express themselves in the planning process. Next slide. The four members of the city organization, I would say, are organized around a shared mission. They're all there basically for the same mission, which is to manage. The growth of your community. Respect the past, identify the values that are important to your community and prepare for the present and the future. So that's the shared mission, but each of you has a different distinct role. And a series of responsibilities in this process. These areas between these different groupings are intended to convey. There are obligations you have to one another and are prerogatives that each of you has. So the city council, of course, are the elected policymakers. They make the policy, they adopt the plans and the regulations. Planning Commission are the appointed policy advisors. They provide recommendations to the city council about. Policy, comprehensive plans, development regulations, depending upon the community you're in, maybe some permit recommendations as well. And the professional planning staff. Are hired professionals. They're not elected officials, they're not appointed officials. They are the staff and they have some distinct roles, which I'll talk about momentarily. Off to the side, you see this hearing examiner. Which most cities in the state have a hearing examiner system. Different cities have the examiner do different kinds of things. In some cases, the examiners not only have hearings on permits. Some of them make recommendations to council for final action on certain permits, others. Make decisions on certain permits. Some of them are used to conduct hearings of appeals. Of actions taken by, let's say, the staff. So there are different distinct roles for each of these members of the team. And again, you all serve the general public. Next time, next slide. Now, when people say planning involves land use decisions, that is a true statement. But there are at least three very distinct type of land decisions. And I've tried to classify them here. Legislative decisions off to the left here include actions taken by the city council that are basically the overarching rules. For what can and can't happen, what should or shouldn't happen in your community with respect to plan. The comprehensive plan, of course, is sort of the lead dog in this dog sled of policies. That's the direction of where you want to go. Showing master plan does the same thing for the lands adjacent to waters of the state, things like lakes and rivers of a certain size. The developed regulations, which is zoning, subdivision, grading, other regulations that control the use of land. Subdivision ordinances such as Bob discussed earlier, stormwater ordinances. Basically, anything that establishes the rules that are going to apply in your community are legislative decisions made by the city council. Recommendations on what those should be are made largely by the planning commission with some input from the city staff and from the general public. Rezones have. An application as legislative decision if what you're talking about is a large area with many properties or many owners. That kind of a rezone is considered to be a legislative rezone. That's distinct from. The quasi judicial permit column you see here at the bottom of that, you'll see the word rezone again. Well, that's because certain rezones that are very site-specific that deal with a very small number of. Properties can be considered quasi judicial. Well, what's the difference between quasi judicial and legislative? Big difference. Quasi judicial, as the name suggests, the body there is conducting themselves as though they are a judge. Making a judicial decision. So it's a very rigorously controlled process where the rights of people have to be very rigorously guarded. Due process is very important. Avoiding some of the issues that Mr. Sturbank was talking about earlier, not being arbitrary, not being capricious, not taking property without a good public purpose. Those are the kinds of things that really limit. Operations in the quasi judicial realm for those kinds of permits, things like conditional use permits, variances, preliminary subdivisions. Substantial development permit is a permit for something along the shoreline that's subject to the regulations in your showing master program. So those two things are different legislative decisions are very different than quasi judicial permits. Over on the right side, you see these administrative permits. Binding site plans, building permits, grading permits. Final subdivisions. These are permits that do not require hearing. These are permits that do not require action by a planning commission or a city council or hearing examiner. You're purely ministerial. Now you'll see across the top of these, these three boxes. Two arrows. One talks about the degree of discretion in making decisions. The second one talks about the impact of public comment in these different kinds of decisions. And as this, these arrows suggest, the further to the left you go. The more discretion there is in making decisions. So when you have a comprehensive plan in front of you, city council and planning commission. Generally speaking, there's a pretty broad range of choices you could make. They're not unlimited, but they're, they're fairly broad. Likewise, public comment. Can have a lot of influence on what you think those decisions ought to be in your comprehensive plan, your showing master program, your development regulations. The farther to the right you go, though. The less discretion there is and the less effect public comment can have. So for example, under the administrative permit, you see building permit listed as a permit. Well, the building permit is very much controlled by the Uniform Building Code. So there's not a lot of discretion when that staff person is processing a building permit. To wield independent judgment, there really is no discretion. There really is very little judgment they can make there to basically make that permit decision based on. The code. So that is a case where public comment has very, very little impact. Quasi judicial, of course, is in the middle. It's not unlimited in terms of how much discretion there is. There usually are criteria that have to be consulted and applied. In reaching a decision on should this permit for the planning of development or the condition is permitted be issued or not. So that's the broad range of things that people characterize as land decisions, but they're very different kinds of decisions. Notation across the bottom there is that the Growth Management Act requires that all permit decisions. Whether they're quasi judicial or administrative, they must be consistent with the development regulations. Which in turn are guided by comprehensive plan. So the hierarchy is. These legislative decisions, the policies and the rules. That's the big picture. That's the long term. That's what you're aspiring to reach. But those are implemented through things like. Quays official permits, administrative permits. As well as capital projects that are built and other kinds of programs. So this is the whole hierarchy kind of boiled down to this one diagram. Like with any, any image, it can oversimplify a lot of complex things, but here's I've tried to summarize for you some key distinctions between. The legislative decisions that councils make. The administrative decisions that. Planning staff makes in the quasi judicial, either decisions or recommendations that are made either by a planning commission. Or an examiner, depending upon what your code says about who has those hearings and who makes those decisions. Next, next slide. So city council's role as policymakers, I'll just scroll through these quickly. They're the elected officials, they represent and are directly accountable to the people. They appoint people to the planning commission. They give policy direction about the work program and resources. To be allocated to help achieve that. And they take final action on those legislative matters that I was just discussing. They take final action on those quasi judicial matters that the local code says go to the legislative body. As I said, and sometimes, in some cases, the examiner is given authority to make the decision. In other places, you can only make a recommendation and then the council has to take final action on those sorts of permits. Next. Planning commission roles. Again, remember, you're advisored as a commission. You're the first and primary body who has hearings, solicits comment from the public. You have an important expertise you bring as members of the community. You don't have to be a realtor or an architect or a builder. Or a lawyer to be a good planning commission member. You simply need to be somebody. Who lives in or does business in the community and reflects the values and perspectives of that community. Your duty as a commissioner is to listen to the staff recommendations, take the public input, weigh the evidence, pay attention to the criteria. And then make a thoughtful, well-considered recommendation to the city council. You're not decision makers, you're advisors to the council. Next. Planning staff. Well, staff plays many roles. By this, I mean. Planning land use doctor is they're at the front counter. Anybody walks into that counter wants information. How is my property zoned? What's going on in the project next to my house? What do I have in the way of background you can share about the community? That's one of the roles the staff plays. They also are the guide. They point out to the electeds, the appointed, to the members of the community. What's coming? What's the big picture? What can they pay attention to? How can they take part in the process? Another role they play is researcher. Frequently, a planning commission will have a hearing, they'll take testimony, they'll have a question, and they may turn to the staff and say, can you look this up for us, bring us some information back? Either can you respond now if you have the answer, or can you bring information to us at a subsequent meeting? So that's another role the staff plays. Staff is also the messenger between the commission and the council. Frequently, the commission will bring. Bring information to the council that is from the commission. Occasionally, the commission chair will come and do that as well. And finally, the heavy. The staff is the enforcer of the regulations that are adopted by the council. So these are different kinds of roles, but they're all roles you expect your staff to play. Now obligations. What is the commission, council over the commission, the respect and support the role of the commission? Appoint commissioners who will commit the time and care needed to do the job. Carefully review the recommendations you get from the commission and take in time to understand the record and their rationale. Avoid cherry picking, cherry picking the record. So if seven commissioners come to a conclusion, one of them does not. You should give weight to the outcome of the final deliberation of the entire commission and not cherry pick. Other obligations. My advice, agree with the planning commission when you can, disagree only when you think you must. But when you disagree with the commission, take the time to explain why you're disagreeing. Provide a periodic two-way feedback between the commission and the council. I suggest you meet at least once or twice annually. And they also owe direction to be given to the council commission in terms of the priorities and the scope of work for the work program. What the council owes the staff, rely on the staff to administer and enforce your regulations. Don't micromanage. Council members are not enforcers. That's why your staff is there. You keep the workload priorities and schedule in mind. You should give appropriate deference to the technical judgments of the staff. And if you're unhappy with their decisions to for job performance, you should take that up privately. Before we leave this slide, let me say one other thing, Anne, about the third bullet here. Many times both commission and staff. Commission and council will say to the staff. Here's my conclusion about this issue. And if the issue is a technical issue. Like what's the level of service at an intersection? If you put 500 cars to it, that's a technical answer. That's not a subjective judgment. But many other judgments that you will make, many other conclusions you will reach as a commission or as a council are technical, they're policy. So be careful when you're thinking about, should I defer the staff or should I not? Is it a technical question or is it a subjective question? Next, next slide up. What does the commission owe people? Respect and support the city council's roles and prerogative. Do your homework. Read the information that's given to you before the meeting, not at the meeting. If you have questions that can be answered before the meeting, call or email the staff. This saves a lot of time. Give careful consideration and weight to all the public testimony, facts, and criteria that govern that particular land's decision. Have an open mind, treat everybody with respect and strive to persuade. You're not there to argue. You're there to persuade and have an open mind to be persuaded. At the hearing, it's advisable to address everyone by their surname or their title rather than their first name. You may want to be friendly, you may want to appear approachable, but that can look funny to someone on the other side of an issue. Give appropriate deference to technical judgments within the staff's area of expertise, the same as with the council. And finally, this is important, gracefully accept the council will not always agree with you. That doesn't mean you're wrong. The council has a right to disagree with you. As I said earlier, they will agree with you if they can. My advice is to do that, but if they can't. They, they're not obligated to. They're the decision makers ultimately. As I said, though, what they do need to do is when they don't agree with you to make clear that they don't. Agree and why, if possible. They don't have to be defensive. They don't have to argue with the commission. They seem to be clear explaining the commission. Thank you. I reached a different conclusion than you've reached based on the same facts. That's totally expected and that's not always easy to take. But that's the way it works. Planning staff's obligation provides thorough objective analysis, alternatives to consider, and recommendations based on good facts and best practices. Again, the messenger role, carry forward and explain the commission's recommendation to the council, even if the staff did not agree with some part of it. Respect and support the commission's policy advising role and the city council's policymaking prerogatives, including again, their prerogative to not agree with the staff and the commission. Provide responsive, complete, timely answers to questions. Hearing examiner. Typically is involved only in quasi judicial activities, permit hearings. They're professionals, sometimes they're lawyers, sometimes they're planners, they're contracted to make permit recommendations or decisions. Based on the criteria supportive by inadequate record. This allows the local legislative body or the advisory bodies like commissions to spend time. On policymaking legislative activities rather than a lot of time on public hearings. This also reduces local government liability exposure. Because you typically, if these folks are trained in the law, they're less likely to make an error that could present some kind of. Financial exposure to the commission to the, to the city or cause the decision to be overturned on appeal. Again, it's more important to remember for planning commissions, I think some of this applies to councils as well. Each member adds value by bringing your perspective, your experience, and your opinions. To the commission's deliberation. So you're a team, but. My favorite slide coming up here. It's great for people on a team to be colorful. But. Don't be this guy. In my 20 years in local government, I've seen all of these prototypes up on the dais. I've seen people who seem to project that they know what they're doing when they really don't. I've seen people treat others with a lack of respect, as though they know more than the other person knows. I've seen people tilt at windmills. I've seen people play the Lone Ranger. I've seen people bully. I've seen people who think that their duty is to take from the rich and give to the poor like Robin Hood. You should never be rolling your eyes. And you shouldn't be gambling. You shouldn't be taking risks needlessly. I once had a planning commissioner. In a city I won't name, who in considering what the alternative might be that he would recommend to the, to his fellows. Literally out loud said, well, what the hell, let's try this and see what happens. That kind of cavalier approach is really undercuts the credibility of the entire. Commission and the entire organization. So take your job seriously. You've got a right to express an opinion. Be thoughtful about how you do that and how you project that to your peers and to the people watching from the audience. Next. So here's some tips for public meetings and hearings. First, we'll talk about the chair's role. It's that person's role to gatekeep, to announce the agenda, to manage the flow of items and comment, to enforce time limits, and to maintain decorum. Occasionally, you'll have to say, excuse me. You need to wrap up your comments. Others need to have something to say. Please conclude your comments. So you have to have a firm hand as a chair to keep things moving along. As part of the opening remarks, the chair should state that all the input will be given consideration, but that's the commission's job to weigh all the information, including the comment, before they reach their own conclusions. The chair's role is also to assure that all commissioners are given a chance, equal opportunity to ask questions and express opinions. After the hearing is declared open, the staff would present the report. And then public input will be taken. Time limits can be placed on the length of comments at the discretion of the chair, depending upon how many people are in the audience who want to speak. Planning commission members may ask questions of either the staff or those who give testimony, but this should be for purposes of clarification, not arguing with people. After the chair. I think we've just seen a slide. Okay, it's possible you may want to make the decision that. People need to sign in, get, give, sign in to give testimony, so we know who's giving testimony, the name and their address, what item they want to speak to. And whether they're speaking in favor or against an item or otherwise. As I mentioned earlier, time limits can be established, keep things moving along. You can arrange the order of speakers so the testimony is heard in a sequence that is logical, proponents first, then opponents, then others. So when listening to people at public hearings, keep in mind that some people are nervous. They're, they're not used to giving public testimony. So be patient with those folks who are uncomfortable with public speaking. Be patient if they're upset. Or always wanting to challenge city government. Patient with other members of the committee who may not agree with you or understand your perspective. So discussion evaluation and liberation, the decision-making body should discuss why supporting approval or disapproval. Makes sense based on reasons for the criteria. Determine positions and or consensus for action. Don't seek new evidence through argument, though argument and comment may be allowed. Motion to approve or disapprove should instruct the staff to prepare draft written findings and conclusions, documenting the reasons for the decision. And then bring those back to the next regular meeting for final approval and passage by the commission. That's the end of a quick summary of some best practices. So I'll pause and see if there are questions I can answer.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions?
Any questions for Joe on that portion? So that little booklet I sent you with uh, just the highlights of the short course really includes a lot of Joe's words. As one of the long-term instructors for the short course and local planning. Okay. And I don't see anything in the chat. So I guess the final stay segment goes to. Bob for open public meetings and public records act. But before, is there any questions on anything that we've talked about tonight? Before we get to. That piece.
We may pretend May who had his hand up.
Mayor Pro Tem. May you?
No, I was just giving a thumbs up to Joe. Great job, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we um, at Department of Commerce are always open to help you. We've specifically hired a team, including Joe Tovar, to help with the updates to the housing element. So I encourage you to. Work with your planner staff and reach out if. If you have would like us to come back or or. Bring some other resources. Without further ado, I'm going to let Bob take it away on Open Public Meetings Act and Public Records Act. If you haven't have not had this training and need the certification, I'll put the link to the certificate that you can download, you can sign. You provide to your staff as a record of your training.
All right. Thank you again, Ann, and thanks, everybody, for hanging in. For some more exciting legal jargon and acronyms. A lot of you have heard bits and pieces of this before. So hang in for the repetition. There are a couple of new twists, particularly in the O P M A. So. Uh, again, as we've talked in others. Why are we doing this? Well, in this case, because you have to. Uh, it it's required for members of the governing body within ninety days of taking office and every four years thereafter. So. Uh, it's a bit like taking uh, your medicine. Uh, but it's also, I think, apropos to Mr. Tovar's comment. Uh, it's an opportunity to talk about uh. Best practices and tips and ways to move through some of uh, what might otherwise seem like the more difficult or mundane obligations to move through those a little more smoothly. So uh, big picture on the Open Public Meetings Act. The quorum. With action equals a meeting. And if you have a meeting, there's a notice and the right of the public to attend. And in other words, the meetings must be open to the public, thus the act's title, the Open Public Meetings Act. Um, sounds simple, not quite as simple in practice. Um. So purpose statement of the O P M A, uh, you may have heard this before, the people. Don't yield their sovereignty to the agencies uh, which serve them. That's us. Uh, and that we're not given the right to decide what's good for people to know and what's not good for them to know. And. In order to retain control over the government instruments they created, the people insist on remaining informed. The O P M A, the Public Records Act, uh, both play a key role in achieving those purposes. And that's in the very opening section of the O P M A forty-three, thirty, zero, one, zero. So the act itself says that it's to be liberally construed. That means in the case of a close call, uh, the court, this our Supreme Court. Is going to interpret it in favor of the act's purposes. Uh, and uh, against any more limiting interpretations that might be offered by local government or local government officials. And as the, in the words of the Supreme Court, the O P M A is Washington's comprehensive transparency statute. Uh, and that purpose is to allow the public to view the decision-making process at all stages. Again, the words of the Supreme Court. There are some exceptions to at all stages. We'll get into those in just a minute. So the general O P M A requirement is that all meetings of the governing body of a public agency. Shall be open and public. And all persons permitted to attend. Except as otherwise provided. The except as otherwise provided. As part of the uh, the trick and the nuance in interpreting the statute. As are the terms that are involved here, meetings and governing body. As well as public agency. And as we now know from the pandemic, attendance. Is uh, has some new wrinkles too. Uh, based on technology and and what it allowed us to do with respect to to uh, remote meetings like this one. So first of all, what's a governing body? Means the multi-member board. Commission, committee, council, et cetera, or other policy or rulemaking bodies. So there's a catchall in that definition. When it at and then some some actions, when it acts on behalf of the governing body, conducts hearings or takes testimony in public, so. The basics, governing body. The city council, in our case, a planning commission. Uh, other bodies that are created. Can be um, a governing body, depending if they engage in any of these uh, steps that are outlined here. What is a meeting? And here uh. In my Bob's personal uh, view. This is a keep a big flaw of. The act. Other states that have parallel statutes define what a meeting is. In terms of. A physical gathering or a gathering electronically of a certain number of people. It it refers to something. Our O P M A defines it circularly said, saying a meeting means a meeting. At which action is taken. And then action in quotes is defined very broadly. Generally around transactional, transaction of official governmental business. It but not limited to decision-making. That's final action. But also including deliberation. Consideration. Discussion. Uh, in in particular, I think it's the consideration part that that uh. Really introduces some ambiguity since. Deliberation and discussion often occur out loud or with written words, but uh, someone who's sitting and passively listening or. Apparently passively listening can be considering. Uh, and so it it's really quite can be quite an expansive verb. Uh, so. But. The courts have said that if there's not a quorum, there's no meeting, subject to some exceptions that I'll cover in just a second. The exceptions are, of course, the ones, the the specific actions that I mentioned a moment ago, um. That uh. Speak to the particular actions that can be taken on behalf of the government body, if it's a task. Uh, or uh. A special purpose created entity, if the committee conducts a hearing. If the committee takes testimony. Even if that is not. A quorum, even if the committee doesn't represent a quorum of the overall body. Uh. And it engages in those actions, it can then be. Fall within the definition of a governing body and that that's a meeting, even though there's not a quorum occurring. Some examples, and these are involve some of the more what in the past, we might have thought as borderline things that probably qualify as a meeting. Email conversations, serial phone calls, texting and messaging. Involving a quorum or more. With the intention of discussing city and county business will probably be considered a meeting. If the court is asked to review it. And uh, you you may, again, referring to some Seattle Times coverage, remember the case coming out of the city of Seattle. Uh, related to its um. Uh, uh, head tax on certain um. Uh, large businesses. Uh, and then the serial text messages. Uh, with various council members discussing um, their support for uh, repealing that. And that was ultimately, uh, loss was brought by the Seattle Times and was determined. Uh, because vote counting was occurring in these serial messages. Was determined that was a meeting that violated the O P M A. And ultimately, the city paid. A not insignificant sum to settle that litigation. Another example, uh, gathering, there are various times when a quorum or more of. Committees, commissions, the council will gather to hear a state of the city or a presentation by the mayor or exec executive. Either on the state of the governmental body or some other important topic. Probably going to be considered a meeting if there's discussion of uh, governmental business in uh, that um, event. Likewise, things that. More typically might be considered social events, a quorum at a dinner at the board president's home. A discussion in the parking lot. At a late night diner or tavern, cocktail party, site visit. All of those will be probably be considered by a court to be a meeting if governmental business is discussed. Some of those have somewhat infamously resulted in litigation. Uh, you might recall. Dinners at the uh. President of the University of Washington Board of Regents House. Uh, now those were not strictly social events, although argued to be because. There were agendas and discussion and action taken during some of those. Uh, yeah, there were meetings of a certain. Smaller city closer to the mountains in East King County where a quorum or more of council members. Typically met following a council meeting at a local tavern. Uh, an excluded council member uh, got wind of those, brought a lawsuit. The court said. They were discussing, it was a quorum or more, they were discussing local business, governmental business, it was a meeting. Uh, so all of those things are things to look out for. Um, they're not what you may have thought would be a quote unquote meeting when you signed up for your. Uh, volunteer position or your elected uh, position. Uh, but that is the way the act and the the jurisprudence interpreting it have evolved. Now, sounds complicated. How to comply? It's really not too difficult. It's uh. We provide notice of a meeting. Uh, and the public has a right to attend the event. Uh, there are several uh, for which this city uh, just today provided. Notice uh, and there are things that are on the city's website, calendar, there are events that are not regularly scheduled meetings. But they're being noticed that way for exactly this reason that we're talking about here. Now, what is the right attend? Mean right to attend? Well, it doesn't mean that you have a right to testify. Or speak. In person, speak orally. Right to attend doesn't mean that there's a right to disrupt. And in fact, some recent amendments just this past year clarify that. Now, what it does mean is that the late, the government agency cannot condition attendance on. Signing in, filling out a questionnaire, providing any other. Information. The governmental body can apply generally applicable conditions. That are reasonably necessary to protect public health, safety or welfare. Uh, we're familiar with the no shirt, no shirt shoes, no entry rules. Those can be enforced. Uh, during the pandemic now, uh, or related no mask, uh, or similar requirements. Those can be applied generally. Uh, or other activities or actions that are necessary to protect against interruption of the meeting. Uh, including during a declared uh, an emergency. Now, the no condition uh, limitation also means that someone wants to bring a camera, they want to record, they want to take a picture. News media want to attend, they want to shoot video. Um, the the governing body may not limit attendance based on those things unless the activities. Uh, that are being attempted are actually disruptive to the meeting. So now, does right to attend mean someone gets to come in person? This is an interesting question, and I think there's a divergence of views on it. The pandemic resulted in some amendments that I mentioned just adopted uh, earlier this year. Prior to the pandemic or as really at the onset. The attorney general issued some informal guidance. Offering the opinion that the existing act and case law suggested that. The public had a right to attend physically, in person. And listen to proceedings at city hall or town hall. Whatever your the school district board meeting room. Even if the members of the governing body were not actually physically present and were calling in. And the A G went so far as to say. That it was the governing body's obligation to have an empty room with a speaker in it. Even if no one was there. Uh, government easily then adopted series emergency proclamations. We all know covering a wide range of uh, steps and. Obligations during the pandemic, suspension of various. Uh, acts and regulations. Uh, some of those included suspending portions of the Open Public Meetings Act. And specifically allowing remote meetings via various electronic platforms, Zoom, uh, go to meeting, uh. Teams, the like. This year, the legislature. Subsequently adopted portions of those proclamations uh, as O P M A amendments, but not all of them. Uh, and actually. The conversation around some of that was. Interesting because uh, the the very folks that. If you told me before the pandemic. Uh, would open government advocates be in favor of electronic access to meetings? I would have said, of course they will. People have been advocating. More and better access electronically for years. But it was actually some of those same folks who advocated against the legislature. Uh, adopting broad provisions to allow that. And arguments were made about how people without access to technology might be excluded. That certain individuals felt comfortable addressing government bodies only in person. Uh, that they had to be given the right to. We actually heard this argument, it's no quality about a particular meeting that. The people needed to be able to stand there and look their representatives eye to eye in the eye and pound the podium if needed. I I'm not sure the pound, the eye to eye and pound the podium are part of. Mr. Tovar's best practices, certainly a part of my best practices, but nevertheless, some of those were the arguments that were made. And uh, that resulted in the legislature being a bit more, I think, um. Hesitant uh, in the amendments that they adopted. So what are they? First of all. Forty-three, thirty, oh, seven, oh, was amended um, that that speaks to um. Declarations of an emergency and and in this it specifically added uh, the. Uh, language allowing uh, that if an existence of an emergency necessitated the governing body to take action. To address the emergency, then a remote meeting without a physical uh. Location was authorized uh, or a meeting at which. A physical attendance by some or all of the members of the public would be limited due to the declared emergency. Think lockdown. Uh, or restriction on number of people in the gathering space, so on, that some of the restrictions that we experienced earlier in the pandemic. Uh, I said that those are the circumstances that are contemplated by this language. Uh, and that also in such circumstances, notice requirements of the act. Are suspended. Uh, so the notice requirements to. Twenty-four hours posting of an agenda in advance, things like that. Uh, if it's a meeting necessitated by the emergency, those are suspended. So that's the amendment in uh, R C W forty-two, thirty, oh, seven, oh. Legislature also added a new section, forty-two, thirty, two, thirty. Uh, that's more broadly allows. Use of remote uh, mediums in the event of declaration of an emergency, whether it's by the state. Local agency or a federal government. And here again. When that bill was being drafted, uh. It the initial drafts allowed for remote meetings only for a state or federal. Federal government declared emergency, but not a locally declared one. Uh, and of course, here in the upper valley. More often than not, we experience local emergencies than we do state declared ones, whether it's for flooding. Uh, or large snow events given proximity to the cascades and the like. Uh, and so I think with some diligent. Uh, intercession by A W C representatives, this was broadened a bit to. To cover local agency declared emergencies. And in those circumstances, if the agency determines it can't hold a meeting. In person with or with public attendance in person, then. A remote meeting is authorized without a physical location. Uh, and and or uh, the meeting can proceed where their physical attendance by some or all of members of the public is limited. However. If that happens and the meeting is held remotely. The governing body must provide an option for the public to listen in telephonically or by other real-time options. Uh, that don't have additional cost like. Local cable brought TV broadcast. Or internet streaming YouTube. Other electronic means, we're probably all familiar with those now after multiple years of the pandemic. Uh, and if no electronic listening option is provided. Then the meeting can't proceed uh, unless the only action that's taken is an executive session. So those are the new um. Broadly uh, described, the new options. There are, there's some other catchall, uh, catchall uh. Language in that section that I think leaves it open to some. Potential disagreement as to whether uh, other remote meetings can be adopted. Uh, by local government bodies as part of their normal rules. There are. Are parallel requirements in uh, the optional municipal code in thirty-five, eight, twelve, for example, and in other places. Uh, that I believe would allow that. Uh, I think. Communications from the A G about this new statute. Uh, disclosed that the A G's view is that. This generally allows remote meetings only uh, in instances of declared emergency. Or that it's a hybrid meeting, similar to this one this evening, where there is a physical presence available if someone wants to come in. Uh, and that other. Uh, electronic remote means of attendance, both by. The public, by uh, members of the body. Uh, staff uh, are encouraged by the act. So I. Uh, commend your uh, attention to that new section, if you're not familiar with it yet. Now, as to the types of meetings, we are talking general and notice that goes with it. We're talking about two specific types of meetings. We're talking about two specific types of meetings, regular meetings and special meetings. Regular meetings are those that are set by the bylaws of your organization or resolution or ordinance. There's a statutory requirement in the optional municipal code for cities to uh. Determine uh by legislative act when it's uh regular meetings are to be held. Date, place, time, or date location. So again. There are options to interpret what location, whether that means physical or in the uh in the internet realm, but. Uh there's that obligation and then a special meeting. A special meeting uh comes with the obligation to um. Post the um agenda with twenty-four hours notice uh and to also provide. Written notice to each member of the governing body as well as to. Each local newspaper of general circulation or radio or TV if they have a notice on file requesting uh such notices, special meetings. And then if it's a special meeting, uh you may only. Take action, final action on the agenda items that are listed on the the published agenda. Uh as opposed to the more typical practice during a regular meeting where the governing body may add. Uh new agenda items at the meeting and then take final action on it. So again, as noted previously, notice is not required if the meeting is needed to address an emergency. Uh if there's impending injury or damage or some other need to take action, then the notice requirements of the OPM are suspended.
City Attorney Sturbank, we do have a question from Councilmember Johnson.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh go ahead, Councilmember Johnson.
Uh thanks. Um yeah, actually, uh something came up in the chat and I was like, hmm, that's actually a really good point. Uh with regard to the chat function on Zoom. Since uh let's say that uh we did have members here who were uh in person. Uh we don't happen to have any members of the public here tonight, but if we did, which we certainly could have. Uh they would not have access to the chat feature in Zoom, or at least they are not guaranteed to have it unless they had pre-registered for the event. Um so yeah, can you, can you speak to that? Use of the chat in Zoom.
Sure, um I think what just occurred here. When the mayor called my or earlier when the ma- the Ms. Fritzell pointed out that there were questions from the chat. The presiding officer can note the existing of questions and then articulate those aloud so that the body can hear those. Uh then that that is a way to to ensure that whatever is coming in electronically is also part of the same meeting that's occurring. For the same, but in general, I would. Suggest it's the the better practice is to avoid those types of uh electronic communications during an open meeting. Where the communications are not themselves visible or audible um to the others, members of the governing body or the public participating. Uh there have been. I think some past instances in other cities where uh members of a governing body were emailing each other. During the public meeting about the matters that were on the agenda. Uh the local newspaper got wind of that, made a records request, got the emails. Uh alleged quite publicly banner headline about illegal meetings within a meeting. I don't recall that a lawsuit was filed in that particular instance, but it. It resulted in a fair bit of controversy and uh and negative public attention, so. Uh under the heading of best practices, I I'd also suggest avoiding uh those types of electronic communications that are. Uh that are not transparently part of the open part of the meeting.
Thanks.
Sure.
Ask one more question.
Absolutely.
So you talked earlier about um. Emails or texts can cause a quorum, what about if there's a Facebook post, someone comments and like. Three council members get on and like it.
Uh that I have not seen yet as far as likes, uh I think the. Case law that exists related to emails suggests that a court would want. To look at whether or not there was an intention to participate in the meeting. And I think the statements in those cases. Uh relate to. Uh mere passive receipt of information, that does not can uh consist of participation. That would uh indicate it um. A quorum necessarily. Uh a thumbs up like is somewhere between, you know, an affirmative statement and passive silence. So I think it remains to be seen. What a court would do with that. Again, under the best practice heading, communications like that uh should should probably be avoided. Uh where possible. And it does create the the. Uh problem, I think, or the potential unfairness as between members of the body, whether it's members of the planning commission or city council. That. If a court is later going to count towards a quorum, who uh they're sort of a. People who jump in first and express views of seem to be able to do so with perhaps more freedom than the third or fourth or fifth member. And uh all I can say is that we would need to wait for additional legislative or judicial guidance about those kinds of search circumstances.
Say Bob, um. You know, I've found the 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 restrictions on being able to have back and forth over things like email or or even text. Pretty restrictive. Do we have the examples of kind of like asynchronous communication that meets the requirements? Of the open meetings. Regulations?
Uh almost, what I would say is, well. Yes, we do in the Seattle case with the text, the text messages, the serial text messaging. Prior to that, there was a a case in the early two thousands out of the uh battleground school district. That involved uh something that started as a request for an additional or special meeting. Uh that evolved into multiple members of the board responding and then offering feedback about what might be discussed. Uh and it resulted in the court resolving the question, and and I think that. An allegation of violation of the OPMA was made, the school board's response was it was not a meeting. And the court, because it was electronic. And the the court said, no, that's not the case, serial electronic communications can be a meeting if they're more than a quorum. But it was a factual question that the that was remanded for uh later determination as to whether a quorum or more intended to actually participate. Uh or were their names just, they were just recipients on the email and. Uh my recollection is the Court of Appeals didn't feel that it had adequate uh factual record on which to make a determination. So. In terms of real live cases where there are lots of example, there are not many. Uh to to point to just uh that case, the Seattle case, uh maybe one other where. Uh where we can see that the courts clearly said that those types of electronic communications back and forth can constitute a meeting. And again, I think it highlights the problem with the the absence of a of a solid definition of what a meeting is in the act.
I guess let me ask my question a little differently because it really speaks to like best best practices for for how we operate. Um like, let's say you're you're iterating on a document. Uh so you know, the EDC wants to put together some documented recommendation. You know, what I'm used to doing is going offline, reviewing it, putting a bunch of comments in the document, sending it back to somebody. Uh kind of going back and forth a little bit, based on my understanding, like that verges on communication that could be construed as a meeting.
And so it's correct, if there were a quorum or more, if if a quorum or more took their turns at adding edits.
Right.
Discussing the the merits, the relative merits of, you know, a. Council member A's edit versus member B's uh. That risk would emerge.
And so i- is there any way for us to do that? I- in in a way that complies with this regulation. That doesn't require us to get on a call that we've invited the public to or get in the same room.
Well, so certainly doing it in a meeting and providing feedback. Where the public can hear uh is one way and certainly would be consistent with the spirit of the act and. Uh it can be time consuming, uh but I could point you to a couple of recent. Meetings of the uh of the councils, finance and administration committee where they did exactly that with the proposed uh edited financial policies. Uh it, you know, took a significant commitment by the committee members as well as the finance director to work through a long document, but that is a way to do it. Uh I think another way that um has been. And that I've seen work successfully is individual members can provide feedback on a document to staff, to the administration. That can collect uh collate and kind of do. Move the ball forward with the next draft and then put that revised draft that collects comments together and bring it to the next meeting. Uh that's another way to achieve this. Now. Not everyone might be satisfied with that uh that effort, and so that that requires the. You know, collaboration and trust in staff between staff and the the body that uh Mr. Tovar was talking about, but that's another way to do it.
Got it. And so as long as all the comments and and feedback were captured and we didn't lose any of that, as long as that gets brought to a public meeting. That would likely be within bounds.
So the individual communications from individual members to a staff member, I don't think are a meeting. Um they're not to each other, um and not being considered or deliberated to each other, it's just going to the staff. The staff can reflect those, those communications would be public records. Uh and that so that you you wouldn't necessarily need to see everything. Uh it might not be possible for everything to be reflected in the the responsive document, but. Uh but perhaps could be.
We have five minutes left, so if we wind up the presentation and respect everyone's time um ending at eight thirty, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to jump forward. Um so we've got some basics about how to continue meetings. I want to talk quickly about a new section, another new section of the OPMA. Uh and that's a forty-two thirty-two forty. Uh and so again, this was a section that was added as a result of some of the back and forth. Uh during the legislative process, uh because existing case law. Actually holds that the First Amendment does not require uh by itself a governing body to allow people to speak. Yes, people have a First Amendment right to petition for redress of grievances, we probably all know that from civics. Uh but that doesn't necessarily mean people would have an opportunity to come to a meeting and demand to speak in person, that's that. Eyeball to eyeball pounding the podium part I talked about earlier. Uh but what did result in the language was the legislature added this section to say unless and there's an emergency. You have to provide an opportunity uh at or before for public comment, doesn't have to be oral. But it has to either be speaking orally or providing an opportunity for written testimony to be submitted before or at the meeting. And if it's option B, written testimony. Then whatever's received has to be distributed to the governing body members. And the governing body may. Also set a reasonable deadline to make sure that you get the comments in before the meeting. Now, someone who. Uh requests uh a remote opportunity to speak because they have difficulty in attending. Uh because they've got a disability or limited mobility or some other reason that they identify. They may request an opportunity to comment remotely and. When feasible, shall provide an opportunity for them to do so if we are allowing oral comment from others at the meeting. I think it's the practice of. Uh almost every uh council that I've worked with to take oral comment. Uh but committee members often don't and volunteer commission members often don't have time to to uh take. Uh public oral comment as well, and so. Uh this, using this opportunity provided in the statutes, just set a deadline and take written comment as a way to meet the requirement. Um and still allow folks to to comment uh in in advance of a meeting. Uh but there are those procedural steps as far as required to identify the the time. And then to when you receive the comments to make sure that they're distributed and that individual members have the written comments. There are a number of uh options for executive session, we don't have time to go into that. One thing I would just say quickly, um since we have planning commission members here as well, that there is a section of the act that says. It does not apply to certain types of gatherings. And one of those probably most relevant here is that part of a meeting of a quasi judicial body relating to quasi judicial matter. Uh between named parties as distinguished between uh your more generally applicable legislative uh matter and. Uh Mister Tovar spoke a little bit about quasi judicial proceedings. If you're on the planning commission, uh sometimes you will be acting in that capacity, you do have an opportunity to meet and deliberate privately. Just as a court would deliver, here's oral argument and then goes away and delivers, delivers privately. So be aware that that uh. Uh opportunity exists as well as the executive session. Uh opportunities to discuss potential litigation and so on. So I know I'm at the end of my time, I've not touched on public records, those slides are all in here. As are slides related uh to the appearance of fairness doctrine. Uh and thanks also to Anne Marie Soto, uh my former colleague at Kenyon Deason now at Madrona Law Group. Uh who uh who drafted a number of these slides for a previous presentation. So thank you again for everyone. For your patience and Anne for the opportunity to speak.
And thank you, Bob, for for your presentation on PRA, like, you know, their big rule of Throm is, if you don't want to see it on paper. Write it down because what you say is a public record. So thank you again to all of our presenters and to all of you for spending a a long Monday night. And yet another meeting, thank you Mayor Ross for hosting us and to Emily Articchi for all of her work to coordinate this training tonight.
We'd like to thank you, Anne, and Joe Tovar and our city attorneys Sturbank for your presentations. And also um to Emily Articcia who's organizes. So thank you, everyone. Thank you everyone for attending, and also for IT. People as well, so um there be no further business to come before us, I'll. I will adjourn if there's no objection. Seeing none. We are adjourned, thank you.